We are at 11:00. We'll go ahead and get started. Could we please start with the Pledge of Allegiance? If you wouldn't mind joining me for a second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So here we are convening as the Calhoun County Board of Health. And this is to consider the resolution and accepting of the recommendation from the health officer regarding the application for Phase Two. And so we do have a resolution to consider before us as the Board of Health. If that is approved, then we would switch hats and at 11:15 convene as the Board of Commissioners to, I guess, formally take action on the next resolution to make application to the state for the Phase Two. So with that, I think what we do is start off with perhaps a brief staff report just to make sure we are understanding of the resolution before us this morning. So I'm not sure who from staff wants to chime in, maybe staff or the health officer. Either one.
Good morning, Commissioners. Axel Swanson, Chief of Staff. I could try to give a brief rundown if I, if I, if I have to jump off really quick. It's because I'm at home, but Elaine can cover for me. But, but you will, you know that some added counties this week were allowed to move to Phase Two. Calhoun County originally was not part of the 10. We worked very hard. I'm proud of our staff. Elaine Carroll, our health officers, Dr. Melnick, Dr. Krager, and everybody pulled together to communicate with the, with the state about our numbers and the data and where we thought we were. That worked. It was effective. We've been allowed to move or to apply to Phase Two. Our staff has pulled together an application in just a little, probably over 48 hours. They put that together. You've got it in front of you. Our PA's office has put together two resolutions, as you mentioned, one for the Board of Health to consider and one for the Board of County Commissioners to consider. So that's, that's what we're doing with these special meetings today. This first piece of this, as the Board of Health, Dr. Krager has sent you a letter recommending that we do apply to move to our community to Phase Two. And so that's what the Board of Health is considering. And, and you would adopt, you would consider and adopt and approve the resolution saying such to the Board of County Commissioners for our second meeting. So I don't know if Elaine wants to add anything to that or if Dr. Krager wants to add anything to that regarding his recommendation. Thanks.
This is Dr. Krager. I'm happy to just make a brief statement. Good morning. So as I wrote in a letter to the Board of Health on May 19th, I am recommending that Calhoun County apply for a variance to move to Phase Two of reopening. So the, the governor's proclamation on the 19th, as Axel mentioned, allowed for more counties to apply for a variance to move to Phase Two with this initial eligibility determined by rate of infection of, over the county, in the county over the last two weeks. And we became eligible based on this rate yesterday. They wanted a rate to be less than an average of 0.7 cases per 100,000 people over a two-week period. Yesterday, we crossed that threshold with an average of 0.5 cases per 100,000. I think this reflects what we've known for the last several weeks, which is that we've had a significant decrease in number of cases of COVID-19 that we have seen. I also think that reflects a lot of the work that the Health Department has done over the past several months responding to this outbreak. Not only do I believe, not only are we eligible to apply, I believe our application will be successful. We have significantly increased our capacity to effectively investigate cases of COVID-19, isolate and cases and quarantine close contacts. We've gotten confirmation from our hospital that any surgeon cases that they would be able to handle, they have enough capacity as well as PPE supplies and bed capacity. With that, I believe we can safely enter Phase Two. And I would just also note that Phase Two is not a return to normal. It is a gradual reopening. And we will work diligently to make sure that we do that safely, that businesses that reopen are doing so safely and, and we can provide them any guidance that they need to do so. With that, I think I will turn it over to Elaine. I believe she had a little bit more to say, but maybe that's for the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Krager. I have the staff report for the Board of County Commissioners. I think at this point, we can pass it back to the Board of Health.
Okay, questions from the board? Commissioner Weber Mortensen?
Yes, this is Commissioner Weber. And Dr. Krager, is your recommendation any way to indicate that the importance of personal responsibility in terms of hygiene and social distancing is relaxed and eliminated?
No, absolutely not. We still expect that our community will continue to take steps to, you know, keep, keep everyone safe in the community and themselves, their neighbors, their family, which includes continuing to distance, to continue to stay home as much as possible. But also recognizes that with the, the decrease in cases, that it is safer for restaurants, it's safer for restaurants to open under specific guidelines. It's safer for businesses to open and allow for some commerce to happen. But no, I would, it does not mean that, like I said, that we relax to kind of our, our normal state of affairs.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
No questions, okay. Are there any questions from anybody on the line? Okay, I'm not, not hearing any. If there's no further questions on the, I guess, the resolution before us as the Board of Health at this point, would entertain a motion?
A motion to do what?
I'm sorry.
To, to accept the recommendation.
Recommendation.
I, I move that we accept the health officer's recommendation.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Also vote aye. So that motion passes so that we have approved the recommendation of the health officer regarding the phased approach and the request for variants to implement all Phase Two modifications. So that's approved. So I think we have to officially recess and then reconvene at the posted time for the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners at 11:15. So we will, we will recess until 11:15. Thank you.
Oh, so there, there, I didn't hear what he said. You have to go back at 11:15, I guess, to hear what the commissioners say.
Okay, we are at 11:15, so we will reconvene. We'll be switching hats as now convening as the Board of Commissioners. And before us, as the Commissioners, we do have a resolution. And this is the accepting of the recommendation of the health officer and approving of our Phase Two variants submittal. We'll have a brief staff report again, just to make sure we're clear on what is before us and perhaps what the next steps look like. And then we'll have opportunity for board questions, comments, and then for any citizen questions or comments for those on the line with us. So with that, I will turn it over to whoever from staff wants to, wants to walk us through this and provide a staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. It's Elaine Placido from HHS, and I will be presenting the staff report. And my goal is to, to give you and everybody listening, watching, whatever the right phrases, some good background of what the, the application actually contains. So I'm going to walk through some bullets and I, it, it, it might get confusing, so jot down questions. So the variance application is robust and it requires that the county identify the capacity to identify and respond to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Information included in the variance request, first, a certification from Peace Health St. John's Hospital that they have a 20% surge capacity to accommodate a 20% increase in suspected or confirmed COVID-19 hospitalizations that they are and will continue to report daily on their status and that they have and can maintain a 14-day supply of PPE and are conforming to Department of Health PPE conservation strategies. And they did submit that certification in the form of a letter, which will be attached to the application. A full description of all of our testing sites in the county. There are currently nine testing sites in the county with no restriction, restrictions on testing. There is an established process for testing of first responders through the county's incident management team and Peace Health St. John's in a partnership. HHS is able to facilitate testing for people who are otherwise unable to obtain a test, particularly those with low income, no insurance, or who are underserved. Third, we need to identify the median number of days from onset of illness to the collection date. So our date range that we looked at data for this was set by the state and those were the dates between April 21st and May 8th. During that timeframe, we had 33 positive test results. Our median number of tests from onset to sample, collection, and test date was four. And an important note about that, during the state range, the majority of persons who were tested were tested due to an outbreak at a local facility and then not experienced or reported experiencing any symptoms. The next point, review of the last four weeks of testing data. So week number one was 4/21 to 4/27. During that week, there were 409 tests that resulted in 397 negative results and 12 positive results. So we had a positive test rate of 2.9%. Week number two was 4/28 to 5/4. There were 331 tests that resulted in 315 negative results and 16 positive results. The rate of positive tests were four, was 4.8%. Week number three was 5/5 to 5/11. There were 218 tests that resulted in 213 negative results and five positives. The rate of positive tests was 1.2%. And the final week was May 12th through the 18th. There were 81 tests that week that resulted in one positive and 80 negatives with a rate of positives of 1.2%. For the entire four-week period, there were 1,039 tests that resulted in 34 positive results and 1,005 negative results and a positive rate of 3.3%. The next point, HHS must document our ability to perform case investigation and contact tracing. Calhoun County is required to have 16.34 trained contact tracers based on our population. And that's a formula that's provided from DOH. HHS has 7.5 full-time equivalent trained personnel currently on our staff and 4.0 FTE trained volunteers available. 2.0 FTEs are ready to be trained, personnel who will be available by June 15th. And the abilities to fill our gap of 2.59 FTEs, we plan to use resources from the State Department of Health. HHS, the next point, HHS must document past performance in case investigation. We had 37 cases identified in the past four weeks and 92% of those cases reached by phone or person within 24 hours. We had 95 close contacts identified in the past four weeks with 89% of those contacts reached by phone or in person within 48 hours of the positive lab report. The next bullet, document local capacity for isolation and quarantine. First, a disclaimer, the best place for sick people to isolate, if they are able, is at home. And the best place for people who have been exposed to quarantine, if they're able, is at home. And so we always try to encourage that. If people are not able to isolate or quarantine at home, we have the ability to offer isolation facilities for up to 93 people and quarantine facilities for up to 43 people. There are differing levels of service that may be provided depending on the setting of the facility from provision of food and daily check-ins by phone call to more robust services from onsite staff. Next bullet, describe HHS's capacity for outbreak investigation. We have in Calhoun County, three skilled nursing facilities, five supportive living facilities, and eight assisted living facilities. We maintain daily contact with those facilities. There are four communicable disease public health nurses on staff with experience in outbreak investigation. And HHS has an established partnership with DOH for mobilization of a rapid response strike team, if that were ever to be needed. And we've developed substantial resources for translation to ensure that community members are able to receive guidance in the languages that they are best able to communicate. During our local outbreak, we were able to provide and develop resources for translation and outreach, including resources in Spanish, Russian, Cambodian, Chukis, Thai, Camaraderie, Vietnamese, Chinese, and Punjabi. So that concludes the amount of information that's in the application that goes up to DOH with the signed resolutions and the letters from our community health partners. And I also wanted to provide an overview of what we can expect in Phase Two. So Phase Two of the state's Safe Start Plan, we can expect the following. First, high-risk populations will be continued or will continue to urge you to stay home and stay healthy. Outdoor recreation involving five or fewer people from outside of your household per week is allowed. Gatherings will continue to be limited and should not include more than five people outside of your household per week. Travel should be limited to what is essential and to travel related to allowed Phase Two activities. For businesses and employers, the changes include all manufacturer, all remaining manufacturing can resume. Construction, including new projects, can resume. In-home and domestic services, including nannies and house cleaning, can resume. Retail sales with restrictions. Professional services and office-based businesses can resume while telework is still encouraged. Hair and nail salons and barber shops can reopen. Pet grooming, restaurants and taverns may open at less than 50% capacity and table capacity no more than five and no bar seating. Individuals should continue to utilize cloth masks when in public and to adhere to social distance guidance. My department recommendation, HHS, along with the county's incident management team, county administration, our local health partners, and our local jurisdictions have worked to ensure that Calhoun County has the capacity, resources, and ability to respond to COVID-19 in a way that keeps our citizens informed and our communities as safe as possible. I am proud of the work that we have done in a very short period of time to prepare a comprehensive and complete variance application. I recommend that the Board of Calhoun County Commissioners approve the variance request to move from Phase One to Phase Two and direct staff to submit the request immediately. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Elaine. First question I have is, do we have any idea how quickly, once we submit, we expect to get a response on approval?
Unfortunately, I don't have any information. I'm hoping that they review it very quickly. We do have a three-day weekend. I don't know what the schedule looks like with DOH, but we're hoping maybe by the beginning of the week, next week.
And upon these approvals, the, everything is ready to submit today?
It is.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Commissioner Mortensen, Commissioner Weber?
No, thank you, Elaine. That was a good explanation. Of course, we're about two weeks behind. We should have been able to do this much sooner. But I, I appreciate the work that the staff has done to document the need. We still have a ways to go to get, get to the new normal, but this is an important step forward.
Commissioner Mortensen, questions?
Yes. Academic questions. You can stop me anytime because obviously this is a good thing, if we, this is a good thing to proceed with. So first question is, do you, do you know if there are any patients, COVID-19 patients at St. John's at the moment?
Are you new here? What? Are you new here?
I beg your pardon?
That's not me.
All right, and just until you, until we open it up. Elaine, do you, do you want to respond to that?
Right, so I have not looked at the, the St. John's sit rep for today. I don't believe that's come out yet. I believe they did have one in-house confirmed case yesterday, but it was not a Calhoun County resident.
And on the same vein, do you know what the maximum number of COVID patients at any one time were at the hospital?
No, I don't have that. I believe that's in their sit rep and I will send that to you. They do have a substantial amount of surge capacity that they have available to them in the facility so they can move people around. And I think they have one whole floor, if that were necessary, that they could dedicate to that. But I will send you their sit rep when I get it today, and I think that'll answer that question for you.
Okay, thank you. The next one, of the, of the testing you mentioned, was that for antibodies or for the virus itself?
It's just for the virus.
Okay, and then of the people you tested, they were all in a would you mind going through again which, what were the categories of groups that were being, that were being, were being tested?
I'm not certain that I understand your question, the categories.
Okay, you mentioned, yeah, are these people that we grabbed off the street at random? Or are these, like I Or are these, like, I, I know you went for the, the folks in the fire department, that kind of thing. Were okay, go ahead.
Okay, so that four week period, we didn't do any random testing other than we did test at the facility at Foster Farms. So that group is included in that four weeks of testing. I don't have the numbers in front of me, which one, you know, how much of, of the test, of the positives during that were included? But it was several hundred people that were tested there. The rest of those tests that I included in my, my four weeks of, of testing results were all people that worked with their physician at one of the testing sites and were tested. So nobody ran them off.
Okay, can we infer much about the overall population?
Uh, for Calhoun County or for the people that were tested?
No, for, it's, it sounds like, I mean, we, we tested people that we thought would have a high probability of being exposed. Is that true?
So, you know, doctors are making decisions on testing that I can't really describe to you. I can tell you that we have about a four percent rate. The people that are tested are, you know, about four percent of those people actually end up being positive. And you can, if you reflect back to the testing results. So during that, that four week period, we did one thousand thirty nine tests and had thirty four positive results. So our positive rate, three point three percent. So it's about three to four percent is what we're seeing.
And how does that compare with what you've seen from other counties?
I, I have not looked in the last couple of days. It's been about the same.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. I did, I did have one other question, Elaine. I noticed in the application paperwork, you know, you, you do talk and you mentioned in your report about testing capacity and how that's improved. So where, if, if, what's changed from, you know, a few weeks ago or a month ago to now? Is if some, someone wants to know if they can get tested, is, is people, are people still just purely directed to their, their personal healthcare provider? Are there other options available now that weren't before?
Well, the options are still pretty much the same. And we're actually seeing fairly decent capacity in, at our testing sites. We've been asking them every day since the beginning. We have developed a few more sites as we've gone along. But people are, should always check with their, their personal physician first if they're not able to get a test. For, you know, they don't have insurance and, you know, something along those lines, then, you know, they should reach out to us and we will facilitate them getting a test.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, is there any other questions out there at this time regarding this?
Are you asking for members of the public?
Yes, just general, anybody else on the line with questions or comments?
Now, here we go.
Okay, there. Is that a comment? Is somebody, you're, you're, you're live, so go ahead.
Yeah, this is Gary Oenstrom. I'm on Anne Marie Wong's Zoom. In the previous Board of Health meeting, Dr. Craigor stated that it wouldn't be a return to normal. And Commissioner Weber asked Dr. Craigor some question and follow up to that. And I think that Dr. Craigor really wasn't clear what the personal protection might be for the citizens of our county in terms of six feet or face, face mask or that type of situation. It seems to me that entering into phase two, that the county should be quite clear about what as Commissioner Weber described, the new normal. So if we can describe that for the citizens of this county of what specifically that might be, and Elaine Placido might want to comment on that. I'm not really asking for comments back from anybody. I am concerned about the continuing education, which I have addressed to in an email to Commissioner Weber regarding our community. Also suggesting that Commissioner Weber is well aware of education. So those are my concerns. What does safely mean? What is a new normal? How, how is the county going to ensure in that respect that there isn't a second outbreak of coronavirus nineteen? Now specifically, I have had some experience in California in March prior to returning to Longview. And it just seems to me that face masks in grocery stores should be a requirement. I'm not sure where the county is in terms of what it can authorize itself versus what Governor Inslee has put forward. I certainly would like to see us move into phase two and get going again. Be concerned about education. What new normal? For our health people, including Dr. Craigor, to clearly enunciate and direct, help direct our community in the education. Handle ourselves in phase two. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. So I don't know, it sounded like he wasn't necessarily looking for a response back at this specific time. I don't know if Elaine or Dr. Craigor wanted to have any other clarification there.
I can, I'm happy to briefly address it. This is Dr. Craigor, so I, I really appreciate that comment. I think it's a, a very important step as we, as we go forward. I think it's something that as a, you know, as the health department, we just, we need to develop and, and disseminate. So, you know, I have lots of ideas. I don't have it all organized in front of me or in my brain. But yes, I mean, we would encourage, continue to encourage people to wear face masks in, in places that are harder to social distance. So grocery stores and, and other retail stores. Continuing to social distance when possible. You know, if, if doing activities to try to do them outside where it's safer as opposed to in an enclosed space. Those are the types of things that we can, you know, be clear to, yes, enunciate and, and clarify for the public about what exactly this new normal looks like. Or at least what our kind of expectations of what safety looks like. Part of it is, you know, we're all discovering kind of what this new normal is going to look like. And we're still developing, you know, plans and, and kind of guidance for, for what that looks like for very specific situations. But just as a general kind of education stand, from a general education standpoint, I think we can, we can develop some documents or some guidance that can be kind of easily shared with the public and, and applicable to a lot of situations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Craigor. Is there anybody else on the phone or via Zoom with a question or comment?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I, I'm of the age group that will need to continue to shelter in place. And so it's my expectation that the rest of you happy to be out there ought to be enough for you, continue to wear masks and do social distancing. Because those of us continuing to shelter will need to occasionally go out for groceries or some other need.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Any others? Trying to make sure everybody has the opportunity, if you took time out of your day to log in here. Okay, I'm, I'm not hearing any other. So at this time, I guess would entertain a motion on the approval of the, I guess, recommendation from our health officer and authorize the submittal of the application for phase two to the state.
So move.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I'll also vote aye. So that motion does pass. Now I know, logistically, want to make sure I, we are all get done what we need to do. So are we all okay, the three of us stopping by the office at some point today to actually sign this, the documents so we can get it sent off? Otherwise, we'd have other options for authorizing signatures. But I assume we can all make it, make it in and see Lisa to sign the paperwork.
I'll definitely try to make it into the office.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, I'll make it into the office also, of course.
Yep, okay, great. So I should take care of that. And with that, I think that does handle.
I did have, I did have I did have another question for Elaine. As soon as the document is signed, are you driving up to Olympia to hand deliver it so we know it gets there?
No, actually, I have another meeting at one, so I will not be driving it. And I think we can submit it electronically.
Good, all right. I don't, I, I don't want any unnecessary delays.
Okay, so with that, that does conclude our special meetings here this morning. And we will get our submittal sent in.
Before you go
Yeah.
Yo, I just wanted to acknowledge, at least on my screen, we had forty five participants in this meeting. My guess is about a dozen or so are from county or government staff. But that's an excellent public turnout. I appreciate everybody trying to survive through the technology. But that's the biggest turnout we've had in quite a while. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, thank you to everybody. And especially staff that we did have to hustle to get all this stuff ready to be turned in. And so there was a pretty quick turnaround and it is much appreciated. Thank you. So with that, we will adjourn. Have a good day.